Let's legally certify the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. My nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Half ton or no?
No.
Alright. One, three eight.
Street project. So, who, Luke, you wanna start or?
Sure, I can start. Okay, so, street project, the, the issues that we're having at the moment, I think pretty much everybody's aware at this point is that we've had a number of areas where the existing pavement after we've milled off two inches, the existing pavement that remains has been breaking up. Some areas, it's been just fine, some areas, it's been very widespread. The, probably the worst issue right now is up in the northwest part of town, Divide and Deapolis, on the north part of Deapolis. The question is, what do we want to do about fixing that? And then kind of, if you will, one, item one D is regards to where the financial, how it's gonna get paid for, that type of thing. The choices on Divide are either patch what most of, I don't know, I guess sixty, seventy percent of the existing pavement. I mean, quite a very extensive patching that would need to be done. What they've been doing up to this point is rather than milling the last two inches out, give or take, it's different in some areas up there, it's probably closer to two inches than anything, but they're milling it out instead of taking just two, they're taking four inches out. So essentially what they're doing is they're putting a four inch patch back in. So in that area, rather than having four inches asphalt total at the end, you'll have six. That's how they're addressing most of the patching. There are a couple of areas, the specifics on First Street Northeast, I think there was some on Tenth where we had that severe settlement. And then one or two other areas in town where the, the conditions were bad enough that we felt that it was made sense to just go in, do the cement treated base in those, just for those patch areas because the, the conditions, the so-so conditions were just that bad, there was no other way around it. And that's a less costly solution than going in and excavating out two feet and throwing new gravel back in, fabric, new gravel, all of the, and then in the process of doing that, you're also running trucks up and down the old streets even more, which could potentially have further impacts. So, the main issue is that the cost of doing the cement treated base is clearly enough that we need council to approve that work if that's what you want us to do, or at least make a choice on how to address those areas from where we're at now. The second part of that, of course, is the financial side of it. Just to give you some perspective on where we're at, with the areas that we have patched or aware of citywide at this point, as of the best we could do from today, up to at least through yesterday, today, we're looking at about seventy-seven hundred and forty square yards. If you take all of the different units that go into that, we could be talking about as much as, gee, it's a little under a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that's, that would be spent on patching. That's still not addressing the, um, Deapolis and Divide. If you add in the cost of, what was it, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to do a cement treated base, plus another sixty-six thousand dollars, I think it was with Deapolis, if you add all of that together, just based on the current patching numbers that we are aware of, and I think these are still maybe a little low, we're actually over budget by twelve hundred and fifty dollars if we pay for all of that. So, that's where the financial situation is at at the moment. The things to consider are, with, with regards to that, is that of that seventy-seven hundred and forty square yards, there's probably about fifty-nine hundred of it that is up for discussion as to whether or not the timing of the paving had any impact on it at all, whether or not it would have been saved. So, the issue there is that there's this requirement in specifications that all of the pavement where it's milled, where the two inch milling's done, had to be replaced within five days. We haven't had that happen, so technically, they're out of spec on that. So of the area, there's a number of areas that immediately started having problems. We pull that stuff out, there's other areas like where we're doing something cement treated base where there's no question that it's just, this was, kinda falls in the same category. You pull that stuff out, there's only about fifty-nine hundred left that you begin to discuss. Then the, then the issue is how much of it, if any, is, can be attributed to them not getting it paved within five days. That's a decision that you guys will have to make. All I can do is throw you, throw some numbers at you as to how much we're talking, how much area, how much, I don't know, whatever. So, that's the, that's the framework that we're working within. First question, which is more important and has to be addressed immediately, is do we want to change our cement stabilized base into Divide and/or into Deapolis? The advantages of doing that are, if we do so, you will cure the evils that exist under those pavements, and there are issues under those pavements. I think everybody at this point is pretty well comfortable with the subgrating there is highly questionable in areas. There's obvious evidence of a mill and overlay that was done with some fabric on some of the, some parts of that at least in the past. So somebody tried to kinda throw a Band-Aid over the top of some, some issues in the past. On the other hand, if at one time somebody did successfully pave and out there and put a mill and overlay on both of those streets, this time you didn't get away with it. Is that because of the rain? Very likely possible. Is that because it was left open for more than five days? Maybe. Is that because the pavement is that much older since the last time it was done and it's just degenerated at that point? Probably contributing factors, a number of contributing factors, it's almost, well, it is impossible to really be able to say, point at one thing or the other. The, um, the question is, do we want to just do the patching, which may or may not be any less expensive on Divide? Probably will be less expensive on Deapolis, but the trade-off on Deapolis is, you know, if we go in and do the patching and stuff that we've obviously seen now, there is a risk that additional stuff will start cracking. There will be some stuff that we won't patch that is cracking a little bit already. And there is a, you're essentially, you're putting a Band-Aid back on that situation. And so, you're gonna end up with a longevity of your pavement that is not going to be as long as a number of other places in town. So you're gonna take, you're gonna be taking a hit, you're gonna have some, you're gonna continue to have issues, yes.
The alternative on Divide is what?
The alternative on Divide is to do the patching, honestly, I think you're gonna spend as much on the patching as if you did the cement treated base because of the unit prices involved and that kind of thing. So, I don't know that there's a huge difference. And if you do the cement treated base on Divide, there's enough volume on that, that road that I think it's worth seriously considering doing that because it's gonna get, that, that process is, I, I love it. And I'm confident that if you do that, you're gonna have very little, if any, trouble with that road.
The same money, but have better product.
It's more money, or the same money, it's probably closer to the same money, just because of the, the areas. Again, what comes into play in that is, well, it's outside of spec, so how much of the negotiation is there between the city and the contractor on responsibility, financial responsibility with respect to that? Or you can just make the decision to, uh, to fix that problem and be done with it. The problem with all of this is that, probably do Divide and still have some money left in that contingency, which was, you know, and that's why we have a contingency, is for the unknown, the unexpected. If you also do Deapolis, we're probably going to be short unless we start having discussions about remaining work that could be cut back out of the contract. Or that the city would just put the bill for without using the loans that they've already gotten for that. So, that's where the decision is at. What do we do? And then the second part of it is, what kind of impacts and discussions do you wanna have with the contractor regarding the pricing and some of this stuff?
Well, I'm not, I'm not gonna suggest in the past that if anybody intentionally took shortcuts. I, I think, you know, whenever we go through these projects, you, you try to do the best that you can to, to make sure that you're getting a product out there that's gonna last as long as, as possible. Sounds to me like the, the concrete base solution to Divide is, in my mind, a no-brainer. It, it sounds like for about the same money, you're gonna get a product that's going to be much more robust. And I think our intention as a board is to, to put together a street project out here that's going to allow us the longest period of time between this project and the next time that we have to do anything as, as aggressive. So I guess my, my take is, we, we do it right. Not only on Divide, but also on, you know, if we're talking about possibly running a little bit over on budget, I'm not personally willing to take a shortcut just to, to, to fall under, under budget. Thoughts?
I agree. The other concern that I have is Tenth Avenue. Once we get that fully paved, the, the traffic we have currently before we, you know, milled, milled road was great. It's going to be great traffic. Are we gonna, are we gonna build that up enough to where it's not gonna fail again? On the spots that are milled out? I, I don't know.
The areas, most of the areas where the trench, where trenches are at have good asphalt in them. But some of the areas have really was just, the only thing I can point at is it was really very poor compaction with the soils around the structures. That seems to be the major issue there. The settlement that was going to happen has by and large probably happened after what, two or three years now. So, that movement is going to be less, but I cannot completely say for sure that there isn't going to continue to be some movement. It might be one way in winter, it might be one way in the summer. Similar on First Northeast, First Avenue Northeast where you guys had that one trunk that just fell up and down and up and down. You get the right kind of soils in there, you're always going to get some moisture under the pavements, especially in the spring and fall during freeze thaw. And I don't know whether it will move or not without doing a lot more close analysis and geotech analysis of the soils that are there. One of the things that we've been discovering in that area and then a couple others is that the soils are highly variable. So, when we did the geotech, you know, the original geotech, you know what was going on at this spot, this big round where they did the hole. It, you can go ten feet away and find a completely different situation. So, there's a lot of variability going on, so it's almost impossible to go out and say, well, if you do this, the soil will do this. It's gonna be variable on what the effects are gonna be. You can make the decision to go in, pull all of the rest of Tenth out and do cement treated base on that. I think at this point, nobody's really had that discussion. I think we're, we've all been looking at it more from the standpoint of, let's get these areas that we know are really bad. We've got some additional patching on this part of the pavement that they never took off, that basically the pavement's pretty much rotten. Some soils up in there are variable and questionable in areas. You know, I don't think, we haven't gone down the road of, we should just rip this whole road out. On Divide, we're there. On Deapolis, honestly, we're really close. But on that one, there's a lot less traffic, it's just the residents up and down that road. So, that one becomes more a question of what kind of ills are you still willing to live with in order to keep the project within budget? Or the other choice would be, what kind of, what, what other choices do, would you wanna make? Probably the first and easy thing to, to bring up as an example would be one or the other bike paths and what we could do with that. We have been having some discussions about bike paths, I'll get to that in a minute, but there may be some ways to save some money there. But first and foremost, it's, what are, what are we gonna do with those roads? And it sounds like you're saying, we should fix them, you're saying, we should just do the cement treated base. What about everybody else?
You were, you were part of the discussion yesterday and Nancy and maybe your guys' thoughts. They're as much like, you were saying, I mean, there, there are some roads that aren't really, really having to use that much, you know. It's too thoroughly could get by, it's just, it's patching, you know, but, you know, but then, we already got, got everything here, you know, it's not gonna be.
Yeah, you're not gonna have another chance of this again in another fifteen years.
Yeah, yeah. And the only question I got, I'm lost, is, I mean, if we need another, you know, quarter of a million dollars, you know, city to, see where we get a loan, pretty, pretty, I mean.
We're covered under the loan we have right now.
So, I mean, I mean like on the dollar value though?
Our loan right now is nine point nine million. The bid came in at five something plus engineering.
We're still playing within the contingency that was established based on.
My, my suggestion would be to buy some of those, if they're, if it does go over, buy a lot, buy it down with some more sales tax. That's what we have the sales tax for. You know, if it goes two hundred and fifty thousand over, you buy it down with half sales tax. That way you're not pushing on that loan, you're not pushing on the residents.
I would agree.
You know, but I guess, yesterday, you know, it's like both of those roads were in rough shape, you know.
Yeah, I agree. I, I mean, I would go with the engineer's recommendation, that's what we're paying him for. You know, and, and when we looked at it, his suggestion was they were, they were reasonable for what we were looking at. I see that, I'd like to see the concrete base in there as well.
I personally just don't want a Band-Aid to begin that. You know, that would just make me sick.
Yeah.
It really would. And like Casey said, the remobilization and the cost, that, that would never happen.
I want the conversation next time the project's being done. Wow, there's a tremendous base under this here, so it's, uh, it's easier than what we even anticipated and we're gonna save money on the project system.
Can they mill it, can they mill the concrete?
Oh yeah, you can mill it. Um, one of the, uh, issues that you'll find is that if you have utility repairs beneath that pavement, you dog on your D P S R cup base as well. And that goes, stuff goes down anywhere from ten to fifteen inches. And that cement treated base, it gets hard.
Sure.
It's difficult to just dig it.
Let me ask you a question on, on Divide, if we decided to not do cement treated and do, dig it out, fill it in, our, our recycle pile is gone, what would you fill that in with? What, what product you have, Ted, that, that would go back in there now? Mix?
Yeah. We don't have anything else there. We gotta incorporate, we gotta bring mix or, or all of them from another source, and that's.
So mix is just as good, not better than a class five, I think, product you're gonna put in there?
Well, we, we got a bunch of recycle out there. We did that on, on one of, one of the other piles, or one of our others up, that's down in front of the church. We were basically out of the recycled concrete. So we used the recycled asphalt and some millings and we filled in that hole with that. Part of that is, is it's not reclaimed and down to the one inch minus. It's, you know, we, you've got stuff that's good, stuff that's a little bit bigger, you're filling it in the hole, but then they're trying to use some of our, our better stuff that's, that we already processed that was gonna go into our mix. And we use that for the top one, you know, so that we could feather that in with the, with the motor grader and, and get a nice finished surface on.
But with that solution there, we don't have, we don't have near as good a base and it's gonna be more time consuming to do that particular.
Yeah, the cement treat is fast. I mean, you, you guys can see the process out there now.
Yep.
They can get a street done and in a day, we can be on it. Or two days, we can be on a paving. But the, the good part about that is once that's set up and that's hard, it isn't almost like concrete. I mean, it's, it's a little dusty, but those streets are rock solid now. So they, they can sit there and they can, we can jump on them, we can let them sit. But we're trying to address the, the more necessary issues right now. Well, like Luke said, I mean, you, we knew that them areas up there had questions of some sort. We all know, we questioned it from day one, we questioned it before we bid the job, we questioned it at the pre-job. I mean, are we, are we sure that that's gonna work? We, we had our doubts, we, we're very concerned because we've never done a project to this magnitude, that much of a mill and fill at one time.
The other road I need to look at is Highway Drive. Out by Rough Rider Electric and Front End Implement Shop, David, I were out there today, even stuff that you guys already put a two inch layer on is coming apart. And, and it's right beside mill stuff that is alligator bad. So, you guys really need to take a look at that port. Leave town.
This is just pretty much the, the match area?
The intersection where you come up from Highway two hundred.
West.
Yeah, right there, that, that and then, yeah.
So, some of, so the, some of that was a two inch mill? And some of that was just a chip seal? What's that, what's that piece?
The yellow one.
Is that a four inch mill?
That was the five inch commercial.
Excellent. Oh, okay. But is that, is that reconstruct? Did we reconstruct that half block?
Yeah, we reconstructed, I don't know, a quarter of a block and then we did like paths in the two inch milling area there.
Okay.
And that doesn't have the top lift on it yet. I think they're putting the top lift on that today.
But here's a spot where that's actually blown out again.
And they're pretty good. Got a little Rough Rider building up a block. However, that doesn't, I'm just saying, that's the same spot is being, that's a slow, you're not re-intersection on here.
No.
Patch mill blown out.
Correct.
So, let's make sure we have that on the two. The concern I have about Divide, guys, is that it was even a street that, it was, it was kinda rough, but it wasn't in bad shape. I hadn't questioned why we were even gonna mill that down. I thought that could have gone away with just a.
Chip set. That was one of the discussions we had when we were.
And it was, it was a decent road. It never was, it wasn't alligatoring anywhere. We had, we had a lot of cracks, you know, they, those guys put a lot of tar on those cracks, but my concern is that it was just opened way too long. And I know there's, I know it's a, it's a puzzle. We got Mother Nature, we've got traffic, we've got everything involved in that, but I think it's just. And I, I've been out watching you guys daily and I, I think that we were just with your subcontractor who was milling, wanted to get out of town and do whatever project else, so he wanted to do everything before he left and that was a problem, I really do. You guys have your own mill here, could have been using that one instead of your, your subcontractor. So I truly think that that is an attribute of why that thing is now eighty percent shot and that we have to do this extra work on it, so. I'm not a contractor, I'm not an engineer, but I do have some common sense. I, I think it's just that, that was, that we're in way deeper than we should be on right now. So I don't know, I don't know how we get around that, guys.
Some roads look good from the surface, but if it's, you've got a little bit of movement down underneath, it's, it's not this that's bad, it's down there. And now we, we compromised, we took that two inches off, we have less strength up here, but this is still moving up.
And I, I don't wanna repeat everything you guys talked about yesterday, 'cause I wasn't here and I apologize. But that Divide didn't start looking like shit until last week. It's been open for three weeks.
So, we've kept traffic off, we've tried to keep our trucks off that.
But you can't.
That's a main feeder going into all those other streets. And when we talked to, you know, why was that one just a two inch mill and, and the rest of them, north and south, were.
Cause it wasn't bad territory.
Four inch, I mean, they said they had, they thought about that. It was on the fence, but they elected to go this way instead of that way.
I mean, it's, they like to go two inch versus chip seal, cause it wasn't broken up territory.
We did bring up the, the five day milling before we did the job. That was a question that our office talked to their office, we brought it up at the pre-job, said this is what our schedule is. No problems with where that, our schedule was as far as our milling and waiting and getting in with our paving after the five days. That was never a question, never brought up by, anyway. Now all of a sudden it's, we're having a problem, so now we're out of spec on our five days. We, we did bring that up at the pre-job, we said this is what our.
At our recon, fortunately.
Our reconstruction, we brought up what our schedule was and it showed that we were going and Trevor even called to, you know, he had questions during, before it was bid on the job. And he said, he brought up that, said that can't be constructed within that five days, not in the same product.
We have minutes for that meeting, we have two going.
I didn't take the minutes.
The pre-con?
Pre-coming?
Pre-con meeting? Yeah, we have minutes. I don't, I don't recall.
We're in town.
That discussed directly in, with regards to the five, uh, yes, we have a schedule. Yes, the schedule clearly shows there were gonna be more than five days, that's what's been said openly. Whether or not it was pointed out directly by anybody, I don't know. I don't, I just don't remember.
And the other hand, I feel exactly the same way you guys do. I don't wanna put a Band-Aid on it, doesn't make any sense to not do it the right way. The approach we're taking the whole time is to do it the right way. So, I'll tell those guys to leave town here, pardon.
Well, that's, the question is whether or not you give a lot of, pass motion to go ahead and do what to do on the streets.
We do, we come to agreement on the price of.
I think you have the opportunity to handle that somewhat separate. Whatever may be a reason for what needs to be done, and that's what you want to do, we've got to get pricing on that. Try to handle that piece and then handle the piece on, okay, let's talk about what is reasonable to be paid for and maybe what, for example, I'm just throwing this out as an example, not necessarily right, wrong, or different. If, one of the, one of the things that you could very easily identify is on, on Divide, they came through the, the two inch milling. If we do this, they gotta come back and do another two inch mill. The question is, ultimately, they ended up doing four inches of milling, which is a bid, I am. Or you pay the two inch milling twice, which would be a little bit more. Is there no negotiating room considering all of the different things that are going around here? Well, I think that there's room for negotiation, no question. Where you guys can sit down and come to an agreement, and it doesn't have to be necessarily today. But in the meantime, you're gonna go ahead and see what that would work. So, as an, that's just as an example of how you can have a negotiation, continue to have a discussion without holding up the work. Or you can make decisions based on where you're at right now and if you, you know, have a negotiation right now too. I don't know whether or not either of these gentlemen are really in a position to ultimately commit their company to something. So, we could certainly suggest and have suggested, in a few cases, different ways to look at it, different issues. Like I said, of the seventy-seven hundred square yards, fifty-nine hundred of it is, I, in my opinion, something that is, can be discussed. The remainder, I think, is very clear that, that that shouldn't be part of the discussion because it's very clear that for one reason or another, absolutely this area was coming apart and this work needed to be done. And there's, there should be nothing to be negotiated back for. But the other fifty-nine hundred square yards with the stuff, you know, is there someplace where difference in price on the asphalt or, you know, well, we'll pay for the asphalt, but not the, the pavement removal? Or, in fact, those kinds of things, I think there's room for discussions there. And I don't, I certainly can't say, I mean, that's up to you guys between mail and mail, this is where that goes. I don't know that it, at that point, it becomes a little less about an engineering decision, a little bit more about, it really falls that I have to do this. It was left open for several weeks, as Derek's saying. Okay, five days. Pretty tough in this situation. Pretty tough in this situation to schedule things efficiently for the contractor to be able to do that. That's their position. It's also true. It's tough to schedule things that way. But as long as some of the stuff was left open, how much of the, you know, when did we get the rain? Versus when it was left open? The soils are susceptible to that kind of thing and in some of these areas, in many of these areas, it's been left open that long and it's completely non-issues. Because there's been base on it, there's been subgrade insurance. It's just, you know, so
Less traffic.
There's less traffic attention. You know, so there's all kinds of these different factors as well. Okay. How much risk does the contractor take during the project? How much risk does the city take? And where is that risk divided? And where's the break point? That's the gray area. I don't think you have to answer that immediately myself. You can, but I don't know if you have to.
Ted, do you think we opened up too much to stuff?
I don't. We'll do this all over. We've done it on, we're gonna do that four or five different cities this year. We're gonna have those. In the past, it's the process. If the strength is there, it'll hold. If it's not, it won't. I mean, it it's out here. I mean, we don't have any mix.
What did you, what did you think, what did you think Divide was coming apart? Right away when you started milling, did you think it was coming apart?
We didn't have the problem right away.
So why didn't we just take it already and talk about this earlier?
We did bring up, is this strong enough to hold and maintain? And we were assured, yes. We, that they have done this before and if there's enough strength there to hold it up.
Those conversations with me happened prior to when it was up with Mill. So I didn't, I know I had the opportunity personally to see it when it was built. I can't add anything to that because I wasn't here.
There's a question that our week convenes at least three times. Kind of our direction was let's just mill it up and see what's underneath and how it holds. So we did that and now this is what we've got.
When do you plan on paving forth?
We're patching it right now and we're hopefully paving that one. I prefer to just finish hauling their stuff out of there next Saturday. So we got two patches from Nyckrur and we had a two or from sewer patches. So we're, we're correcting those issues right now. They're not very big spots, but if that twenty-two thousand ton of mix went across any one of your, any other streets in town, there's no way, usually any single street would've held up. No way. That's, that's street that's built strong enough, there's enough of a base, enough mix down the hole there to where it was it's constructible. That's not an issue over on
It was, they, they were supposed to say highway one time.
Yeah, so I mean, if there, there's enough there, you know. If you're gonna tear off four inches or two inches, you should have a handful of strength left there to be able to build back upon top.
There was a pre-haul road inspection done on that before Nyckrur started running their stuff across there and at that time, correct me if I'm wrong, you're right, but at that time, there were no issues.
Just a couple of our spots that we had to do for our patching.
Right, right, we, right. We're not talking about those, those couple of spots. We're talking about a couple of other areas that have broken up a little bit. One of them seems to be in a old trench of some sort.
Kind of diagonal.
Yeah, they had a diagonal trenches as far as they were worse, but there was no problems with that at the time that the inspection was done. So that one, to me, is fairly clearly a result of the multiple heavy loads that were run across the by, Nyckrur. So and there's recourse, there's a method for recourse that you guys have to try to get that, give reverse to that loss.
Any other, do you guys have any questions for Luke? So one thing, we do need to, we do wanna make the change for cemented treat motion.
I'll make motion that we move forward with the cement base solution.
Okay, in what area?
On Divide Street. Yes, I need to understand a little bit more on Deapolis. You know, with, with limited traffic there, if we, we did patching and stuff there, what's, what's the feeling from, from the two parties here? You guys are the engineers and the, and the real deal, the boots on the ground.
From my engineering standpoint, it's a it's questionable as to whether or not some of that cracking, I think it's likely that at least some of the cracking will reflect through. Whether or not it will, if it's a problem or not, is harder to say. The question is with the contractor who has a better view of what they've been seeing and what they want, what their risk is, because if we decide to pave it and we do have some areas that either immediately or within the next year start to have problems, they're still hold, there's a one-year correction period that is gonna pull you guys back into the discussion. So what's your comfort level that you can pave that and have it stand up?
And patching means on there, it's not digging it out and putting new material in, it's, it's some asphalt.
It's just the asphalt. It's an extra couple inches asphalt. We're not worried about replacing subgrade other than replacing the top two inches of the subgrade with asphalt. And putting six inches total back in rather than four in those locations.
We can go, I mean, we, we feel that we can probably do it with the patching. But we, you know, to guarantee that it's not gonna break up, I'd be foolish to say that, yeah, it's gonna hold. It's, it's a crapshoot. I mean, we're throwing out our options for what we can do up there and then it more or less just kinda comes down to a dollars and cents issue on, on your guys because, you know, we've got that same issue on, on other streets over there for us to say, yeah, we're gonna put a Band-Aid over the top of this and expect it to be like, boom. We can't guarantee that.
What kind of delta are we looking at there? Patching versus the, the concrete?
Um, that one, what we figure probably is
Cement treats like sixty-six and patching would probably be about a third of that.
But that's the one that was milled and overlaid.
That was milled and overlaid with fabric in the past, but we went out there and my question was if you guys did a mill and overlay on this before and it failed, we're gonna do a mill and overlay on it now, why are we doing the same thing but expecting a different result?
That's insanity.
Yeah. That, that's our point of view is we know those soils were much smaller underneath there, but now it's question back on us, why are we expecting to have a totally different output?
So the, the completion of my motion would be both, both Deapolis and, and Divide would be concrete subbase.
Okay, good motion by Dan.
Sure.
Second. Second by Stern.
Discussion. We'll call.
Taylor.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Ken.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Over and over.
Hi, motion carried.
Okay, so there's your answer. Then the other part of this, as we mentioned already, is discussion if any, at the moment, how you wanna proceed on any, any discussions you wanna have with Mail regarding pricing of any of this stuff. Or are you just gonna accept this is what it is? Forward, that's, that's completely up to you and that's less an engineering decision than it is just a what, what's your
Obviously, I think we need to ask, there's I'm, sitting and listening, sitting between you guys and you guys, sometimes it's really hard. You guys obviously, you're on the ground, you guys are, you know what's going on too. We're trying to figure out what's the best for our community and hope that you're both looking out for us. I think you've all heard us say, we understand Mother Nature, traffic, poor soils, old asphalt, you know, there's a combination of things. I don't think I've ever heard you guys say anything you're doing is wrong at all or admit that you, anything you've done is you'd go back and change it a little bit, which bothers me a little bit, Ted. Because I truly think that there's some validity to that. We're not all perfectly make mistakes and I think you guys made a mistake. So I, I would like to try to negotiate a little bit on that price. You know, it's, it's one of those deals where we're stewards of our community and we have to look out for our community. We have to be a real answer to the other twenty-five hundred people here. Say, why did you spend much more money? Didn't you hold accountable? Did you, did you do what was best for us? I think if we don't ask to your bosses, then we're, we're out of our job, so. It's kinda how I feel about it.
That's fair. We can expect you to do it.
And I don't know who that conversation takes place with. It starts with you or go to Trevor or we go?
Well, that's best with Trevor, we'll see what you're doing.
But I heard you mention possibly reducing some other options or build like a bike path or do something. I, I don't wanna not do those things. I don't know what, what, I've not heard from the rest of the board, but those are, those are heavily used areas that people want to maintain.
Those, those are some of the, I mean, the attractions, I think, of our, our city just having not nice stuff. I haven't heard, you know, any, any discussions on what the alternatives are. It may be worthy to, to hear those, to see if we're sacrificing anything on that, but I would, I would tend to believe that we would've had those conversations already.
One of the things
From a design standpoint.
Yeah, one of the things that Mail has suggested for consideration and will build the asphalt bike path first. Because if you recall, we had some discussions about, we already had some discussions about that, how it worked out and all of the other stuff. One of the suggestions that they've had that is to come in, do crack repair. And do, they've got a, what did you call that thing? A, how about flatliner? Flatliner. So essentially what they would do is they come in where periodically there's those fairly significant little dips, almost whatever, from the from the, just where the cracks are at. Come in, fix that, fill that in, and then come in and basically plane that surface and then put a thin lead overlay of some sort on there, which will keep the existing asphalt that's there and whatever structures beneath it, which there doesn't seem for the purposes of bike path, people walking, people riding bikes on it, an occasional, I don't know whether you guys plow that in winter. A skid steer. We're not talking about heavy loads like you would see on a street at all. So they're not showing, you're not showing any issues where, where your base, where your structure is failing due to the loads that are put on it. It's just a ride quality issue with, with that kind of thing. This addresses that. And it would probably be substantially less costly. It isn't something that we evaluated and I don't give Mail props for having come up with the idea. I think it's worth looking at.
I guess I'd like to know where you've done it and ask those people who haven't, how long it's lasted and it's done your job. You know, if we could get an example or two of that, that'd help, that'd help us.
Okay. We could certainly look into it if you wish, if you want us to. I, I think personally, it's worth looking into. You may get a perfectly useful and, and acceptable product at less cost than what we were given it.
I, I'd like, I'd like to pursue that conversation and if, if you guys have, you know, some some areas where you've done that before, it would be, it'd be interesting to hear and talk to them. I think the, the negotiation thing is still
Yeah, this is, this is in and of itself is a good idea. Right.
What if we brought, what if we brought the machine down? You could say it's a wildcat assing. What if we brought that down and set down on a, on an area and did a little bill?
Right. Either way, it's gonna get removed or recovered, so we can go out and show you what it'll do. And then everybody's because if we take the old stuff away, we're gonna lose structure.
Sure.
And that's our problem everywhere we've been. So if we leave our structure and create a smooth surface and put an overlay on it, you know, the kids on the skateboards, bikes on there are gonna love it and we're not gonna see our risk is way less for others.
From, from my standpoint, conceptually, it sounds, it sounds very reasonable. You know, the, the thing is just to see the proof in the pudding when, you know, town or something where, where they've done it and, and just kinda get their, their feedback.
And that'd be great. I'd love to see that product or how, how it's done through.
I'll drag that back with me on Monday.
It's just, just like when you guys were, you know, made the suggestion on the, on the, on the concrete fixes and stuff like that, you know, just talking about it sounds very logical and, and I'm sure it's gonna prove out to be
It may also be something they can do on the concrete bike path where you've got some unevenness. Now, the reason that that's uneven is a base issue. But it may be something we can consider. Maybe it's, well, some of the areas, I think where you're dealing with the truck traffic across the bike path and driveways, I think you're so it's not a solution, but maybe some of the other areas can be, I don't know.
So this would save you guys and us money.
Well, it saves you money, it's just less work for us, so we just don't make it.
It's gonna be less work for us, though.
Well, you know, we already had some discussions and, and some potential concerns on, on that particular path. You know, just in equipment getting in there and all of that kind of stuff as well, so. I, I think it's, I think it's a conversation worth having.
One other area, what? The gravel on Tenth Street in front of the cameras. How tight is that?
Want that moved?
I know it's an addition because, you know, the rest of your streets are paved, but that's the only one right now that has not had any work done to it and if we just did not do that, it would change how it looks today versus tomorrow. So there, there is a potential savings there. If you want that paved, then you can just take that one off. You know, I'm just trying to think of other ways we can save money there.
In the, if you, if you Google the American Concrete Paving Association or the International Grinding and Grading Association, there's a lot of case study history, like let's say on your concrete bike path where they stitch the cracks back together and then profile it and make it smooth, there's all kinds of case studies and shit.
American branding.
Yeah, I T T A, I T T A, International Grading and Grinding Association. And then the American Concrete Paving Association. And the I T T A will have a lot more case study history.
The stitching the pieces back together, you think it's something like a a hole?
Yeah, use a number five bar and pop two, get it in there. Even if it happens to the surface.
What he's talking about has been done on the interstates all
All over the country, sure.
You can see, I can see right now, right now on the interstate, that northern toward the south, Barbo, you can see where that's been done. So that's approved technology. And that's essentially what that process was where they came in, they grind a slot, epoxy and a dowel bar to keep those slabs from moving relative to each other, ties it together, and the diamond grinding the whole thing. That's what they're talking about, it's just not a much smaller shape.
True. And I would do this to keep not the dowel bar, where you're really being like this, instead of going flat. Lot less of the base.
Yeah, same end result, you're still tying the slabs together, slightly different procedure, but
Versus cutting it all off.
Versus cutting it all off and then getting the base.
I think that concrete bike path, that alternates, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars with the sidewalk concrete running there.
Yeah, that's full, full tarot.
Yes.
I think
Well, it's, it's all piecework, but there, there's some modules in there.
I, like I said, I'm not sure whether it's a great idea to try to do it in sections that are more broken up where there's been a lot of heavy truck traffic. I think you're still replacing
Right, others by the city shop.
Right. But some of the other areas where it's not as broken up, but it's still vaulting. And we could certainly go out and look closer at that to determine where we think we could do it, where we can't.
You guys, the other thing we do on our concrete is slapjack, you know, just like beginning of your curbs yourself, there's a big swale somewhere, we can have a raise of that.
Sure.
I mean, there's lots
Yeah, little, they don't know that we identified much of that kind of thing because we were thinking about that part. And I think it was because things were a little bit more broken up through pop. What it's really gonna do is you just take it out and just, we have a lot of things to put.
Keep the ideas coming, John. That's, that's
These are, these are great.
We have an opportunity for cost savings and stuff like that.
Ted, if all goes well for the nature, how long do you think for paving the streets? I know the bike paths might be longer.
We're at like eleven or twelve thousand ton done now. We got thirty-one thousand, uh, thirty-two thousand, we got a street that's added down there. I mean, we're looking at another rate we're going, like another eight or nine days of paving. We can go on. Once we get through some of those areas and get on some of these bigger streets where we can just sit down and get some mix out, we'll get some better production, but right now we're only getting fifteen hundred ton day average. We have this dude, he planted about twenty-three, twenty-four. So it's, it's taken a significantly longer, but once we get through our trouble areas and keep going, it's not gonna take long.
That's just a, a common question that we get.
Like we're gonna leave, right?
Be different for one spot in town, but
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be
Be different for one spot of town, but we're, we're combing the entire city.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be done and then the concrete guys will be straggling back behind us and then it's just cleanup, backfilling. You know, we got a lot of sidewalk work to do and we've tried to get them concentrating on anything in the streets, the curb gutter, the things that matter out front, but, you know, sidewalk, they can come along behind us at any rate they wanna do. That really doesn't affect anyone once they're done. And then it's just a matter of getting that out of the way, so whenever the chip seal comes in, the chip seal won't come in before they're all done.
The other night, Jerry, I had a, we had a discussion with Pete, Ted, and in my mind, we've got the right people for the job because Pete Plow told, told me that Ted did too. They want us, the city, to know that they're a reputable company. And they're willing to come back if there's any issues on their side.
Well, they're, they're a North Dakota company. And next summer, when the company, when the city calls, the mayor calls and says, hey, how'd you do? They want a good reference.
That, that will, that will be, we probably got this job, yes. So with that, I mean, me as a South Dakota firm kid, I was just like, okay. You know, these are somewhat a good old handshake points, you know, so.
And any other questions or comments? I don't think we need to take any more action anymore now.
Just one quick question for information sake. You mentioned the chip seal. At what kind of timing would you need on a decision by the council to elect to do chip seal this year if they open?
To elect to do all of it this year?
To elect to do all of it this year. At what point do you need to know that change?
I would say at least a couple of weeks before we contact the asset to come in and do it, because they gotta, they gotta order the oil.
And that's a great job.
So we've probably got another three weeks before we need to worry, two, three weeks before we need to worry about having to answer the fact question.
Yeah.
And I bring it up so that everybody's aware of the fact that that is something else that's on the table.
That's about another twenty-five thousand dollars doing it all this year versus, because they bid it another thirty cents higher next year.
The, the downside of that would be any, any of that initial cracking that is going to come through at some point. The reflective cracking that's going to come through, you're not gonna have an opportunity to crack seal that ahead of the chip seal.
Again, just another little ways to try to save some.
Okay, any other comments? Dave, this time we drive.
Yeah, just focus on the spots that are, sure, to the storm. Can we go over there now and mark that so we know where?
Please do.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll take a look at it and absolutely look at John's. So we're gonna get with Fartons and have them come here Monday and do Divide. And we're gonna mill all that material off tomorrow. And finish it on Sunday with our little.
Divide and Deapolis.
We are gonna, yeah.
That was absolutely. Absolutely. So we'll mill all that off in the cement treat that Monday and get it all done by the end of Tuesday.
Do we have a number on the crusher yet? For crushing our?
No, we turned that over to Greg.
We did, he came in, but he wasn't quite sure. Some of these little guys that come in and do that, I know we don't, didn't have all of our material out there yet, so they probably wanted to wait and see, well, hopefully this pile will grow. Versus we could just tell them, well, there's another five thousand, you know.
The big copy.
The curb covered in there. But I did get a price on the striping. They sent me that yesterday and I'll, I'll forward it to you, I forgot to bring it in. Have you guys seen that yet? The striping that they're doing in town? I've heard that.
Back, the city, do you think, when?
Okay, have they pictured? They did this at Bismarck.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
See those big polka dots in there?
It's not gonna be quite that extensive from what I understand.
And in mine, downtown, they did recon, they didn't do paint, they just did, they popped up the whole curb and gutter and sidewalk and.
I've done that in, in a number of projects.
They asked, they gave me this permanent rank.
There is.
That demonstration.
Hopefully that stuff stays because the first plow that comes here with the snow, because it's sticking out there all over the place. They, on your boot down, they did the same thing up there years ago, and it's like, wow, it's a big change.
Anything else? Me and Jerry. Thank you. Thanks for making.